All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Horace City Council Meeting for May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll go ahead and stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it looks like we have everybody here tonight, so we do have quorum. Has everybody had a chance to look at the regular agenda? Any questions, comments, or removal from the regular agenda? Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the regular agenda. Okay, I got Sarah with the motion. I got a second?
I'll second, please.
I got a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four is the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda? Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, Rachel has a motion. Does anybody got a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, approval of the city council meeting minutes from May fifth, twenty twenty-five. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from May fifth, twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Any comments or questions? If none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, public comment. Does anybody have anything for public comment that is not currently on the agenda for tonight? Go ahead and take the stand, sir.
Everyone, my name is Adam Dominguez. I live at sixty-two oh two eighty-seventh Avenue South. From the best of my knowledge, we are the only people occupying a home on that street, new development. We moved in in the middle of February, almost about three months to the day we've been there. I still do not have mail service. I don't know which other avenues to take. I've talked with the postmaster. He said they've been trying to get in touch with Dabbert, the developer, and there's no return on the call. That's been going on for months. I reached out to the developer myself and was relayed to a realtor who in turn tried to ask if I wanted to buy a home, and I just said I wanted a mailbox. That is all. I've been going down to the post office and getting my mail every, you know, every Friday as I can when I don't work. But I don't know what other avenues to take, except I was told by the postmaster that Dabbert was responsible for putting the locks in the boxes that are, I think there's four of them on the block, you know, it covers four residences at a time. But I was just, I don't know where else to go or who else to ask about this, if anybody would know.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
So ironically, I talked to the developers representative today about that issue, and it sounds like they did get in contact with the postmaster, and they are trying to work through issues with addressing and with mailboxes in their developments. I think last year or the year before, the city of Horace added a provision within its developer agreements saying that the developer is responsible for those mailbox clusters, and I'm not sure if yours is a mailbox cluster or if it's an individual mailbox or what it is, but my understanding is the developer has since gotten contact with the postmaster. I think it was today, actually, that they talked to him, and so they are working through that issue. And that's, that's the update I can give you of, I mean, that was of today, that they had talked to the postmaster.
Okay, well, that's more information than I think we've gotten in a while, but.
Sure.
Sixty-two oh two eighty-seventh Avenue South. Adam Dominguez. And thank you.
Yes.
Cup Creek, too?
Yeah, and so I think they're, they're just working through the locations of the mailbox cluster themselves, where they're supposed to be, and then the developer has to sign an agreement with the US Postal Service, so they're working through those details, and you, as one of the first homes in there, you're subject to.
Right. For the longest time, the address did not exist when I tried to forward it, credit cards or any other things. It did not, it didn't exist yet, so that was difficult, but it's all caught up now. It's just waiting for the rest of it to catch up.
Yeah, so they're working through that, Mr. Mayor, and I'm assuming there will be an update soon, but that's as of today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. All right, moving on to item number seven is the sheriff's update. I don't think we have a sheriff's deputy here tonight. Do we have an update at all, Brenton? Okay, I'm sorry, was there any other public comment, I guess, before we moved on? Anybody else have a public comment that is not currently on the agenda for tonight? Going twice. Does anybody have a public comment for anything that is not currently on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, public comments is closed. Moving on to number seven, the sheriff's update. There is no deputy here tonight. Brenton, we do not have any other updates? Okay, we will move on from item number seven, item number eight, Southern Valley Fire. You guys go ahead and do your thing.
Good afternoon, evening, in that weird timeframe. So for the time period, April eighteenth to May fifteenth, for the city of Horace, we had twenty-two calls for service, one of them being a structure fire, brush fire, fourteen EMS calls, one electrical wiring equipment problem that was actually a lightning strike into a residence the other day, smoke or order removal, a few dispatch and canceled in routes, and then one alarm system for a fire alarm. Our turnout times are a little bit slower compared to the last month's report. So it was just the timing of some of these calls. Thirteen were during our operational period, six were during our Monday through Friday, and then three were during our crew shifts when the station was staffed with volunteers. Next page, we've just got breakdown of the time of day if some of these calls came in, so between six and nine o'clock is when we had a good chunk of them. The district totals, since I did the report Friday, were up to a hundred and thirty, so Horace accounts for sixty-three percent of our call volume so far, and projections, that three thirty-five, it's actually now three forty-five from the weekend, so we're getting busier. And then some of the big things that we did a couple weeks ago, myself and Deputy Keller actually went to Bismarck to speak at the Vision Zero Conference. They highlighted the car accident that we actually had last year in June, just outside here, so it was actually kind of nice to, to meet and greet with the, the three victims from that car accident and, and actually get to speak to them in our, our line of work. We don't really get the opportunity to do that, so it was actually pretty nice to do. And then this last weekend, we actually completed our Fire One Academy portion. Twenty-four students tested and passed the first time, so it was actually a huge thing, one of the largest classes in the state, and so we're actually gearing up for Fire Two, so. Yep, so it starts with Fire One, and it's just the basic firefighting stuff, and then Fire Two rolls into more advanced stuff, so. It's a, it's a little bit less time than what we've been, but our class is six months long, so we're, the ends in sight, which is nice. Any questions for me?
Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number nine, twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty-three population study by Ryan Graff. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm just going to briefly go through some of the populations, numbers from the population study update that we did, completed for the city over the last, between that and the case study, over six months. There were two main goals of this. The first goal is, I suppose I have it over there, too, so I can look, but the first main goal was to really revisit that population study that we did about two, three years ago now, given the bonding environment to show the, the growth that had occurred throughout the city, and that was, the idea was to help get more favorable rates when you are going out to market for your debt that you did have. The second piece, given that we were in the middle of it, was just highlighting the impact that growth can have on overall city finances with a short case study of a specific growth area within the community, so. This is the results of the twenty twenty-two one, so two years ago, two and a half years ago that we completed it. What that did show was that at the time, we were thinking our baseline population growth would be that at the end of the year, twenty twenty-three, you'd have just under five thousand people, growing to a little bit over between eleven and twelve thousand by twenty thirty-one. What we found as we started this is that we were, I think wildly might be an okay adjective to use, low on where we thought the population was going to be. What we had was that twenty twenty-three number that you see there on the right from the State Census Department. That was actually a July number, and so what you're doing is you're, when you see the twenty twenty-three on the left, that was our end-of-year projections, right? And so what you actually saw is that we were not only pretty much two years ahead of where we thought population had gone by the end of year, by the time those official state numbers had come out. And so that's really the main reason right there, when you see that difference, why it was so important to do some initial updates that could be used for helping secure financing. I don't, I think some of you were here when we did the twenty twenty-two, but not everybody, so what we're doing is, when we're looking at this, is really looking at a more on-the-ground approach to how population estimates are normally put together than what you'd see in a lot of the other, like what MetroCog does or anything like that, where we look at, okay, what is the actual growth that we've seen as far as lots being developed, new plats coming online, things like that, to really help get a better idea and a little bit more granularity on where population could go over the next ten years. And so at the core of what we did is just looking at those, that information and data from the city to be able to help project forward. We do, with that being said, rely on some future projections, and we kind of integrate across the other different population studies, whether it's the ones the school that updated with their forecasts or MetroCog's that they did come out in, in kind of the interim between the two as well. So this is the, the main results. What we did is we have, on the left are the, the two real population scenarios that we put together, looking at kind of our baseline growth, or then a little bit higher based on what the school's projecting. In the middle, you have the ones that are, were put together by MetroCog in the interim between when we had done the twenty twenty-two report and this one. And then on the right is that one that we had done for comparison. And so I think right there, it's really kind of resetting that population baseline, looking forward that potentially, if, you know, development comes in on pace and even with a little bit of slowing in that development, as you see other things like diversion and other land opening up, you theoretically could be upwards of, you know, fourteen thousand people by the end of the population or the projection timeframe. Right there, I think is, might be, I could have probably zoomed in a little bit more for you, but what you see is there's not a whole lot of difference between the, the rate of growth that's happening through a lot of these over the timeframe. We're a little bit projecting a little bit faster growth, but really resetting where we're at baseline and kind of looking forward throughout it is where the, the main differences are coming in. So we have a little bit faster growth that compounds through the end, but. With that, did you have any, I, I think I'll go through the case study real quick and then entertain questions for, on both at the end. So the, the case study that we were looking at, right, was really to help understand the impacts that this type of growth can have as you're looking at the number of houses and, and the people that come with it to actually fulfill those population numbers, right? And so what we did is we ended up looking at, okay, what's a typical section of, that you had growth at or in the process of developing with the city? What does that mean as far as the number of homes? The number of homes that come in, and then building it off that, okay, what are? Maybe I'll step away a little bit, too. You guys can probably hear me without a mic to begin with, but. So with that in mind, what we're looking at, right, is, okay, where are the, the homes coming in of your budget? What are we probably looking at? Maybe I'll turn that off for now, too, but looking at your budget, right, so where, what, what impacts would that have as far as new property tax revenue coming in, but also kind of on the flip side, what additional service would you have to, to better, or costs associated with serving that development itself, so. I can go back to it. For posterity's sake, right?
I'm sorry?
And those out in the.
For posterity.
Yeah. Okay. We can probably go to the next slide. So where we did select is the area that you see in front of us here, and so at this point, it's not entirely fully platted, but you see a lot of the plat, the logs that had come in for the original plat there as well, and so on the next. There we go. So at the core, though, are the two revenue streams that we looked at that will make up the bulk of any new revenue from a new development will be property tax and sales tax. What we ended up doing, looking at the property taxes, we looked at the assessed value of the homes that had come into that development area, and then projected forward based on uptick rate of new homes about in line with the population projections we had had. With the sales tax, what we did then is we looked at your average per household sales tax within the community, but then we felt it more appropriate to apply a a discount, knowing that some of that sales tax is based on the activity of actually realizing that growth and not necessarily just on the people and the, the general day-to-day activity of them throughout the community, and so as you continue to fill in, this area itself would be responsible for a, a lower amount of sales tax as you're not having building materials or things like that being taxed because it's fully built out. What we would, and we did break it in between residential and non-residential as well, so looking at a, a commercial bit, developing in there as well as that residential. And so in general, by twenty thirty, again, based on, you know, current property values and if it fills in over the timeframe, you'd estimate about a million dollars in, in revenue between all of the new development and an, an area about six hundred and forty acres, right, that section. On the expense side, what we did is we took your existing, and I don't have, I apologize, as many times as you review, I didn't notice that I, I didn't pull in the years, but still have the same timeframe, twenty twenty-five on the left, going to twenty thirty on the right. But we focused really on the general fund and the highway fund, because that's where the bulk of those costs are going to be coming from. Highway fund activity, really looking at street maintenance, kind of street improvements as well, and so the idea being that as you see that grow from, you know, about, we took a, a fraction of it, and I think it was about eight percent off the top of my head to, to begin with, and then growing that at a faster clip, just because as more roads come on, there's a larger share than of the total road base within, lane miles within the community. General fund, also you see that coming in around three hundred thousand now is kind of a proportionate share, and then growing to about six hundred and ten thousand of those, and so overall, as you look at the, the idea, and I think it's on the next slide, where we have the combined, yeah. So looking at the combined then here on this slide is, in general, if a full section were to build out, and you have property values, you know, starting around three hundred thousand, assessed values around three hundred thousand dollars a home, seeing some commercial built into that, increased residential activity with sales tax, the, the revenue that would come in would, in this scenario, based on some of these assumptions are, is higher than the expenses required, and so what that means is that as you have the development, it is providing an opportunity for that increased property tax revenue to either be decreased, right, depending on what council decides, or to help with additional general government expenses throughout and deferring the cost to the other areas throughout the community. Following this, it just, the, we had to talk a little bit about special assessments, and it was more to include special assessments within the, you can't talk about development without having. I think special assessments are a key part of it, at least today, in today's day and age in North Dakota. Really, a more simplified approach to the special assessments, though, is just looking at what's in there and then recognizing that there are mechanisms the city has to be able to make sure that, or cover in default in some of those, and so the core here is what are the special assessments with the slight premium that is a included with, or within the authority of the city to levy, and so for the most part, special assessments in this are just considered a wash. There, that premium isn't always realized, because that's there to cover for things like delinquencies or defaults on the special assessment. And then, again, at the council's discretion, that if there is a surplus that were to be generated in those funds, you know, you'd have, be within your authority to decide either, you know, to pay off the loans early or whatever makes most sense, given that, so. With that, I would open it up to, thank you, and then open it up to questions, so. We did take that into account when putting it together. We left the actual assessed home value flat, and so there's no growth in assessed value for the, for the residences that are there. It's just that new growth that is allowed within the, under the new legislation. I appreciate your time. If there are any follow-up questions, Mr. Holper will be, and Mr. Volton send them my way, and we can connect and get you what other additional information you need, so. Thanks.
All right. Moving on to item number ten, Metro Flood Diversion Authority. Brenton, you have this one?
Okay. Jason's going to pull this up on the screen here. What you're looking at, we received a letter just before our last council meeting, so we didn't have time to process it and be able to evaluate it before the meeting. However, within the letter, the Diversion Authority asked for response by May twelfth. We spoke with them, because later in the letter, they said we had thirty days to give them a response. We did talk with them here last week about that, and they indicated that they would honor that thirty days anyways. The Diversion Authority, as we're well aware, is looking into how to get the land off their books there for excess land, so the railroad corridor, council has talked about this corridor before. We've made an offer of for the corridor from Liberty up to Center. The Diversion Authority is asking in this letter if the city has interest in purchasing its half of the rail corridor adjacent to our Stormmar Pond. So what you see up on the screen in front of you is the Arrowood Third Pond. It's a dry pond, so that's why you don't see water in it. But it's a pond lot, Stormmar Pond Lot. Basically, would we like have interest in purchasing half the rail corridor adjacent to that lot? It comes out to be, sorry, five thousand eight hundred square feet at fifty cents a square foot, plus their admin costs ends up being three thousand two hundred and ten dollars. All they're looking for right now is if we are interested in that chunk of land or not. Staff's recommendation would be no from an angle of, we really don't have much of a use for it. It would just be more area for us to mow. If the city was to buy the rail line, it'd either be that whole portion to where we could actually have a use for like sewer, but for this little portion, we didn't see a benefit for the city. However, being land acquisition and asking of interest, we wanted to get the council's direction of, do you have interest or not, so we could get a response back to the Diversion Authority?
All right, discussion. Sarah? Naomi? Steph?
Um, I would like to point out in the memo that it says on page two, if notice of intent to purchase is not received within thirty days from all adjacent landowners, the diversion will proceed to sale via public sale. So I mean, I think we need to think long and hard in our decision here, because at the end of the day, it's thirty-two hundred dollars next to our city pond lot, and I don't know, Brenton, unless you did, maybe you got further, like, understanding of that statement, but we would usurp all of the other landowners' ability to purchase their parcels, and there's such a long history on this issue. We would effectively be blocking the sale to all of the other residential landowners. That's what it seems to say in the memo. Did they, did they?
I, I think that's more directed at the residents than at the city. The, the intent is not for that to.
I guess I would want to know that.
The intent of that draft that is similar to how they did Rivers Edge Fourth Edition and, what's that, where are the other ones over there? Not Rivers Edge Fourth, River Bend Fourth and, like, still for those ones as well. All the property owners have to.
So do, do you know effectively what would happen if we say no, that are, what they plan to do with the parcel? Do, do we know?
I don't think that they quite know fully yet what their process will be. They're just trying to gauge interest from the property owners that are adjacent to the rail corridor as to whether or not they're interested in purchasing that parcel, and that's all it is at this point, is just those property owners showing an interest. There's nothing that binds anyone into actually purchasing anything at this point. There's no purchase agreements that have been sent out or signed. It's just, are you interested in it or not?
And you're saying that we got that because that lot is technically a pond lot?
Because the lot is, the adjacent lot is owned by the city of Horace.
Can you highlight on there in color the specific area that?
Yep, he could shade that in.
I would appreciate that, because I think there might be misunderstanding or confusion. It's only five thousand square feet, and it's right next to the pond lot there.
Are you, you're just looking for approximately the chunk of land that they're asking that we want to buy? Okay. Yeah, he could draw that on there. It's basically go to where the ballast starts and, yeah.
So they're just wondering if we want to add it to our already sitting.
Yes. Yes.
Which is an already built-out pond, so to me, I would agree with you guys that I don't see any benefit at all to it.
If it was, if it was a much longer distraction, there was some opportunity for some infrastructure or something about disrupting, you know, neighboring landowners, I would say that would be a possibility, but at this point, that little chunk isn't going to be much for us in my mind.
So as of last week, when the Diversion Authority spoke with staff, I believe they indicated most of properties, Jim, do you recall, was it like three parcels or adjacent, two or three landowners they have not heard back from? Three, and so that was where they were at, and that was just before that May twelfth deadline that they had.
It's formidable, and is that currently a ditch?
I think it's fairly flat. That's where a lot of the. But that, that portion, I think, is a little lower. It's the ballast part that's up, elevated.
So they also informed the city that they started working on removing the ballast. That's going to be part of this whole process, too, just so the city is aware of that.
Well, I, I would need a clear understanding, because based on the wording in this memo, they are saying if all adjacent landowners do not file an notice of intent to purchase, they are proceeding to public sale. I guess to me, I would not, I'm not supporting, for thirty-two hundred dollars or the potential of blocking all of the adjacent landowners in this long battle to prop, I would not support that. So I mean, unless we want to try to figure out for sure, do you see what I'm saying?
I do.
They're saying if not every single landowner wants to purchase, they're moving to public sale, and I guess I'm just saying to think about that before your vote, because we have a long history on this issue, and, and we would be effectively undermining all of the other owners along the rail line, and I don't support that.
Is there a way to find out if that's what they truly meant with that language?
So again, the language is, is meant for all the residential properties if they don't buy their portion and sign off on the plaque, because remember, part of this whole process is they need to go through the plating process, and everybody needs to sign off on the plat. In a condition of plat approval and a condition of the sale is that everyone has to be in agreement for it. It's directed at the residents. It's not necessarily directed at the city. I totally see what you're saying, Councilmember Landstrom. But again, at this point, it is just whether or not people are showing interest. There is nothing that binds anyone, so I. So I, I still question if everyone that is adjacent to the rail corridor is going to actually purchase uh the portion of the property. Right now, I'm just saying, are you interested or not?
Because I guess um to Stephanie's point, my concern would be if that language was where Stephanie's thought process is going. Is, cause I don't know exactly how their process is. If, is it saying that every single landowner or parcel owner has to buy? Or they're going to scrap it all and none of them get to buy it? Is that what they're trying to say? Is that what you're getting at?
That's what I read in the memo.
That's my, you kind of might understand with the previous plots too.
That's, it's the same-
So that if I say no, we would basically be scrapping the other residents?
It's plain language in the memo.
Yeah, if that's, if that's how they want to hold it out, then yes, that's how it would be. But I don't know if that's their intent. I, again, I represent city of Horace. I don't represent what other entities are that own the land. So the question for the city is, are you interested in the portion? There's no agreement that's being presented to the council at this point. It's already interested, and I think they, it sounds like they provided a dollar amount in the letter. I haven't read the letter.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I don't know what it actually says, but.
Is there a way to, is there a way-
I'm a little bit upset because I feel like my hands are constantly getting tied by other entities. I'm frustrated over this whole, this whole rail line. I'm so frustrated because if that is true, that city of Horace, if you don't buy this piece of land, we're scrapping it for all of these other residents, that is-
And again, I don't think that's their intent. The intent is to treat this similar to how it was done for River Bend and Jace again, Arrowhead Fourth. And it just so happens that the city of Horace owns a parcel during this one. I don't, there's-
If a notice of intent to purchase is not received within thirty days from all adjacent landlords, so we're not the only ones receiving this letter. All adjacent landlords are receiving it, then they will proceed to sell via a public sale, which is the fourth step in the process.
But, but what I'm saying though, Sarah, is that the language is not clear. Stephanie is right. It's saying if the landowners are not all going to agree to buy their parcel, they're gonna stop the whole thing and then they're gonna be like, this whole rail line is gonna be for sale.
They didn't say that.
Well, it's not clear.
I feel it's pretty clear.
Because that was the process before, Lucas.
If, if it were to move to public sale, would the city renew interest in purchasing the rail line?
The, I'm being frank with you. They do, I'm telling, I, I'm telling the council based on what they told city staff. They don't know yet what their full process is going to be, so I can only speculate. Right now, they are simply trying to gauge interest from adjacent property owners. Do you want to purchase the parcel that's in front of your property or not? That's what we know, so anything else is only speculation.
I think if we want to stay true to, I mean, I'm, I'm only speaking for myself. I think if we wanted to stay true to allowing adjacent landowners to purchase their parcel, this concerns me as a block and I would be in favor of purchasing it. It's thirty-two hundred dollars. It adds to our pond lot. We've bought, we've bought other properties for a lot more.
Is there any way that we can reach out and say that we're actually not interested in this property, but if it keeps this group of residents that we would like to know and that we would be interested in?
Are you thinking of just doing like a contingent interest? Meaning if the city's the only one that says no, then it will-
I would be interested in that.
Consider buying it.
Or I guess, I know that it's in the diversion's hands, but I guess, I don't know what their conversations have been if they're allowing other landowners along the rail corridor to purchase property other than that directly adjacent to the back of their property. I have no, I have no idea, but I don't, I, I would not support the city being a block um to the other entities purchasing your property.
I think that's a pretty far stretch, that if the city doesn't buy it, then all the other property owners don't. That's, that's a really big stretch.
I don't know. That was in the language before.
But I think that's why we could draft up the exception, like we are generally not interested, and if this does keep the residents from-
I think it's just as simple as if the council desires, again, it's your decision, just a contingent acceptance.
I would make a motion to just purchase the additional property for three thousand two hundred and ten dollars through the excess land policy of the diversion.
For what purpose? Only for this reason?
Yes. Yep.
I don't think it's clear then, to justify spending tax ceremonial. Three thousand dollars that apply that we don't need, that cost us to maintain. That three thousand dollars that could go to upgrading a park or something, you know what I mean? I mean, this being unclear, we would need additional clarification.
I want the clarification too, because I don't want to be the reason why somebody can't move forward with their land. But I also don't want to spend the dollars either. So I really kind of want to know, like, what is, what is this entity doing? I, I'm confused by their, what they're doing.
I don't think they know what they're doing, which is a problem.
And that's what I'm trying to relay to the council, is that they've given us this information and that's what I'm relaying to the council.
This is only related to this particular parcel. There are, if I'm looking at this correctly, a lot of other people that would have to purchase their parcels that could also potentially block this. Pull up that map, please.
I can't hear you.
Everybody has signed already that hasn't helped there.
He just said there was three that wasn't, so.
There's two empty lots and you guys that are holding us up.
Who's the other lot?
In that new development.
Two, two of the lots are in Arrowhead Third, right?
That, yes.
Yep.
Are you, are you?
Oh, okay.
Every single resident that lives along the corridor currently has already signed.
And when you say signed, it's just a, uh, yeah, okay.
Have, sir, have you, have you spoken to the diversion? So
Oh, okay.
So if, and I think I know the other parcel that you're referencing then, if that entity is not interested in purchasing, is it the undeveloped land? Are they gonna, or she, are they going to, was the diversion going to entertain parcels on the west side of the tracks to purchase them? Or, if you have an-
Go ahead and take the podium.
So, just real quick for some of the clarification, so we have had some meetings with diversion. Um, all of the adjacent property owners have signed their intent to purchase. Uh, they actually have a meeting scheduled Wednesday and their packet's already out and the the recommendation is to move forward with all the adjoining property owners. The only ones they didn't have back was the one from the city and then the couple on the south edge. Um, but they're also entertaining the idea if they weren't interested to let the, you know, the west one buy or buy across.
That's kind of what I was-
Um,
Yeah, me too.
But, yeah, with, with the talks, they have gotten all of them back. Um, but-
Okay, but are you saying if we don't buy it, then they can still move forward?
They told us, they told us that you weren't going to be the deciding factor if it was something that you guys didn't want. Um, it's, they're moving, their recommendations to move-
I just don't want to stop you guys.
No, 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 no. That's why I kind of wanted to come up and kind of clarify that, because that's what we were told from the diversion, um, or their representatives when they met with us and we turned all these in. Um, the couple on the south end and then your, your portion of it, that they already told us because there isn't sold and a couple of those lots, I think, are on auction or whatnot, so they're going through a bunch of loops. So they said that wasn't going to deter this. Um, but everybody else that has like residents on there and stuff, they, they told us that they got them all. Like, if you look at their packet for, for Wednesday's meeting, all of them are, are returned.
Perfect, so we don't have any blockages, it sounds like.
Right.
Like, I'm, I'm just going off what we were told, but I feel like you probably should know that as well.
Then still the letter saying contingent on, um,
However, that should be worded.
I know, however, I just do. But I mean, it would be really great if the person who's purchasing D two, they could also have D fourteen, if D fourteen's in question. Um, if we don't have need for it and they have a potential for-
Yeah, I, I can tell you just from the public meetings, everybody on that, on that west side, um, actually the majority of everybody on there, if their um back neighbor didn't want it, they were interested in continuing the purcha- purchase, so.
Perfect.
Um, the only thing the diversion came back with that one is depending on how the lines need to be redrawn or whatnot, to what needs to be approved through zoning and stuff, but um, they've been willing to work with us on redoing some of these lines, so. But yeah, I might, I figured you want that piece of info.
I, I appreciate that. Um, I guess that does make me feel better. It's not definitive from the diversion, but my whole goal in being the South was I didn't want to block adjacent landowners.
Yeah, that's what they assured us that it wasn't, and then looking at their packet for their Wednesday meeting, their plant or their recommendations to move forward with all the adjacent property owners, so they got all the physical ones back already, so.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Okay, well then, I really don't want to buy it.
No, I mean-
Hang on, we've already made a motion. Lucas, what do you want us to do?
So if there's no second, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Is there a second?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Councilmember Landstrom made a motion to purchase it.
I suppose too.
This is easier if there were one second to it.
Once again, is there any second? Hearing non-motion fails. Do I have another motion, please?
I'll make a motion to decline the letter of interest as received from the metro flood diversion authority.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, I'll second it with um the addition of the contingency.
What contingency?
The language.
The language, yeah, that in, I mean, Lucas, what do you think it should say? Contingent that this doesn't buy residents from being able to purchase their adjacent property?
Why do you want me to change it, Lucas? Have Sarah change it?
Do you want to accept the friendly amendment?
No, I will withdraw my motion and she can make hers.
Okay. Rachel, do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
And?
I'll make a motion to reject the uh letter of interest with the contingency that this doesn't block residents from purchasing adjacent property. But feel free to reword that to make it make legal sense.
I got it, I got it.
Got a motion, do I got a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Number eleven, water sewer storm in Street Improvement District twenty twenty-two dash twelve, River Edge Second Edition. Lucas, you have this one? This is a landscaping maintenance agreement?
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, I'll make this super easy. This one is being tabled uh until the June meeting. The developer has been out of the country and not able to review the agreement and provide changes um to me yet, so tabled again.
Oh, okay. Moving on to number twelve, uh Clearwater Cabinets. Jace, you got this one? Or not?
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a um not necessarily an application, but this is a petition to vacate an easement. As you can see, there's a twenty-foot wide utility and drainage easement between uh lot eight and lot nine, block two, within Visto's Third Industrial Edition. Clearwater Cabinets is the owner of both those parcels and is seeking to expand their current facility, crossing property lines, which is permitted under city ordinance. Um, however, they're not able to cross through those easements without those being vacated. So this is the first of a relatively lengthy step process um in order to do so. And in your packet, there's a series of eight steps that have been listed out. Uh, the petition was submitted on May fourteenth. Uh, item two, then council's required to make a finding that the petition is in proper form, and I apologize, there's a typo in your memo uh and contains requisite signatures, and that's where we're at in this process. Um, and if the council accepts the petition, then this will be noticed in the paper for four consecutive weeks and then hold a public hearing tentatively for July seventh, uh where you hear from any interested persons, and then you would make a decision on that uh which requires a two-thirds vote, so at least three council members uh here for the city of Horace. Uh, then a resolution's published in the newspaper, a transcript of that resolution is then certified by the city auditor and recorded with the county's recorder's office, and the resolution conveys in the title of the easement area to the budding property owners. Uh, this is all occurring because again, the easement was dedicated to the public, um, so we kind of look at this as seventy-five hundred residents having interest in said area, which pushes us into this process. So staff does have a motion or recommendation to accept and order the petition to be filed with the city auditor and direct staff to commence noticing procedure in accordance with the North Dakota Century Code for four consecutive weeks. Yes.
I have a question for you, uh, Jace. Um, logistics on this, when would this come back to city council, please?
Correct. Uh, this, if this petition were to be accepted, we would notice for four consecutive weeks, which would push us at a public hearing with city council on July seventh. Let me get you oriented here.
Lot eight and nine?
Between these two.
Do we need the drainage?
Anything? It's just a typical easement, not a big deal if they've purchased both properties and are planning to expand.
Do we need the drainage between the two? Their what?
Oh.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with this. Any of you?
No.
As long as it's not, you know, interfering with someone else's easement or something, just go back, blow back down a little bit there, reduce. Yeah, there's, there's no reason that that would cause issues with anyone to the north and drag me to the south as open, so I'm okay with this overall.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, the um proper findings and requisite signatures, the proper findings is exactly that, making sure that there are no utilities within the easement area, making sure it doesn't affect an adjacent property owner. And then the required signatures, those that are adjacent to the easement area to be vacated have to sign the petition, which they did in this one, so. Jace has been working with our office on this and, and we drafted the petition, so should cover all that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, I'll make a motion to accept and order the petition to be filed with the city auditor and then direct the staff to notice in the paper.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, moving on to number thirteen, uh, the capital improvement plan. Uh, Brenton and Jim, you guys will both have this one.
Okay, for this is our four-year capital improvement plan or CIP. Uh, the CIP is intended to be a living document, which covers, for this one, it'd be uh fiscal years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight. Um, with that, it would identify basically your key infrastructure projects and also allow your maintenance projects that you would see throughout our community for those given years. When you're looking at the first year of the CIP, those, those projects, which is later in the memo here, uh, I summarize those projects within this memo. The first year is the most accurate year, the accuracy drops because we don't know necessarily all the pro, all the, you know, development activity, for example. Um, or necessarily some of the projects, we'll know some of the bigger projects. But as you get to later years, like in this CIP twenty twenty-eight, those project years, the, the year that project may happen, may change. Yet priorities of the council may change also, but these are projects that say staff interviewing with uh Jim and Joel from our staff and Adam, uh reviewing to go, okay, where do we see the needs and what makes sense within those given years? So like I said, that, those projects out in twenty-eight likely will change. Some may happen in twenty-eight, some may not, some may be twenty-thirty. Uh, don't know exact year. Um, also, this is uh fluid from the angle of funding availability. As we know, funding programs change from time to time during legislative sessions. We're still evaluating how Prairie Dog was in, the Prairie Dog funding was impacted through legisla- legislators. Um, I'm told that we're going to end up getting a little bit more, but we need to see how it all calculates out. Uh, that is also why you see when you're looking at the projects, that we haven't went as heavy on Prairie Dog in the later years. Uh, since we're still evaluating that, we treat sales tax and Prairie Dog fairly interchangeable. Uh, we just like to have fewer amount of projects impacting Prairie Dog funds because Prairie Dog is something we have to report on. Um, in addition, when you get into the project years, you can just go down to the project years. Uh, we separate out the regional projects, maintenance projects, they're all in one area. And then down towards the bottom are the developments that we foresee within the next two years. Uh, going out farther in two years, we don't have any developments really on our radar for farther out than that. Um, your big projects, so for example, and some of these are reflected either within your budget. So with our twenty twenty-five budget, your maintenance type projects, uh they're covered a lot of times within our budget. Uh, if they aren't addressed specifically or within the budget, then we bring those on- If they aren't addressed specifically or within the budget, then we bring those on a case-by-case basis to the council. So, like, you may recall earlier this year, we talked about the Millen overlays, Millen overlays are called out. However, street patching, we did also street patching, that was part of that action by council to do the street patching when we were doing overlays for some of those developments to get that last layer overlay. Your bigger projects for this year, we do have on here reflected sewer line along eighty-first and seventy-six, and a lift station there, eighty-first and Wall Avenue. Almond's Drainage Project, for example, it's a CIP fund, those were funds were dedicated or set aside last year, or towards the end of year budgeting process. We have a grant for the tree removal and replacements over at City Hall in Northwood, where we had a grant dollars and forestry fund paying for that. Deer Creek Parkway is on here, for example, and those are more of your regional projects. I believe we had Luther, in Luther Avenue, your big one.
Can I interrupt?
Yep.
Well, with twenty twenty-five, I mean, maybe I have my bonding packages confused, but are we missing, like, Oak Valley?
They're separated out.
They're on a different page.
Yep.
There's one, a page called new developments.
Yep, I separated them out, apologies, it gets a little confusing, but we separated them out, so that way you can see new developments to the very last page. Yep. Yeah, no, it, it feels like that a little bit, but we wanted to make sure you see, here's new development, and here's all the other projects, so you can see the differences there. New developments, so touch base on twenty twenty-five, Southdale Farms ninth, Deer Creek State's first, Sparks with Eighth Avenue, Willow Grove, Oak Valley, and Horse Elementary Park. On Willow Grove is also including Cub Creek Way, so it's getting that whole collector road portion throughout Willow Grove in. So that's why that project is fairly expensive, or higher than some of the others, it's because you're doing a whole collector road right there. Sparks, that one's up there a bit, but we have quite a bit going on with the Sparks project, so, yep.
Are you going to be asking us to?
If council is comfortable taking action, you can, keep in mind, this is, like I said, a living document, the dollar amounts are going to change as we know what the bid prices are. This is more playing purposes to show, here's what is on our radar, here are the projects that we're accounting for. The developments, for example, you, you take action on the developments individually. So when we're going through, like, a special assessment process, you're going through that individually. The regional projects, where we have for, like, for example, twenty twenty-five, we'll take Luther Avenue, we're going through a special assessment process for that, too. You're taking action on those individually, so this is really a planning purpose. So Oak Valley is accounting for that within the local, or that local development, the development itself, project. So it's a, it's not a standalone separate district for any collector road within that, is that correct?
Is there the city contribution?
Yeah.
Well, Matt, I mean, with the new legislation and everything, I mean, how are you feeling with the twenty twenty, I'm curious about twenty twenty-five right now. Like, I'm, I'm just in twenty twenty-six, like, I mean, we had discussions, um, we had lunch before all the legislation passed. I don't know, you sound a bit concerned, I, I mean, you're the professional financial director, I guess I need to kind of hear from you on...
Sure.
Is all of these projects doable? I mean, bonding lines, are we?
There's nothing on the pipeline right now for, for a bonding package. As Brenton said, this is a ten thousand foot view, and very fluid, it's pretty much a work beginning roadmap. As each project comes up, it becomes easier than it always does, according to CIP, does not need to be put in a way that's not here.
Okay.
We'll look at each individual project and component as we do now. As we have our, our workshop next week to go to the finance and, um, to those who have questions for, for next week. But this is just that ten thousand foot view, roadmap of what potentially is a head of exploitation.
Do you, and it's probably our conversation for next week, but do you, do you anticipate with, uh, with our budgetary restraints now that we're going to have, that we're going to need to use more of our sales pa- sales tax to fund our general fund? Or is that a deeper discussion for next?
I, I would say really quick is your general fund is not funded through sales tax, so...
Well, if you know what I mean, we're going to have to offset the, the deficits that, that you said was going to help, I mean, maybe it's not sales tax, but what, my point is it's going to have to come from somewhere.
Yeah, but it's almost, it's separate pots of money, basically, it's, sales tax...
Sales tax is specifically for infrastructure, so we, we reserve that for the city contributions to the regional projects. Prairie, that's, that's all reserved for infrastructure projects. The legislation doesn't impact the, the continuation of the contribution lines. It could affect bond ratings and interest rates on bonds due to less revenue for the state. That, that's where that could become a issue, but we're still not getting quite that impact as state.
Uh, it's Jim or Jace, uh, do you know if we've had any impact on the, uh, the one grant, at least I see on this page, for twenty twenty-five? Because of everything that's happened this year federally and locally, has that grant, money's still there for the Pedden Bike Path?
Those dollars should already have been...
Yeah, the, so the TA, the current TA and CA are CRP and all the funds that we've gone for are still guaranteed until the next time they pass legislation. So they're meeting, my understanding, right now on Capitol Hill about TA and CRP and what the funding phase of that are going to be. So it may not be a avenue, you know, two or three years from now, but right now, what we have secured is, is still guaranteed through that.
Okay.
What, do we, and again, this maybe is for next week, do we, do we know, um, what we currently have in our fund balance for Prairie Dog funds?
Uh, we have just under, I think we have about five million.
Yeah, last I recall, it was around five million.
And were there some changes to the Prairie Dog funding structure at the state level this year, or was there just discussion of it?
So they did do some changes, the first bucket, so Prairie Dog was made up of two different buckets of funding. The first bucket shifts a little earlier in the process for filling. The second bucket, I believe they were changing up how that occurs and how it fills up, or, um, that, that was where the changes were, and that's what we're evaluating to figure out how that is done, because they had, my understanding is they had a portion that is more dedicated for the cities and the counties, and then another portion that is grant-based, and they would have to apply for grant funds through the state. So it's basically making some of the Prairie Dog dollars out there more of a competitive grant process, instead of just allocate to the cities or counties, so...
Any other questions?
Did you have other questions on twenty-five, or would you like me to run through the other years, twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or what would you like?
I don't have any more specific questions on twenty-five.
Like I said, this is a living document, and quite a few of these projects, like the developments, are ones that council has already seen a little bit of, or you may have seen the plots already. As for the other projects, there's connection to Fargo for sewer, there's final lift payments, you, a variety of different type of projects. And we tried to think of about anything we could possibly could of, what are ones that we see within the next four years?
If there are no more questions, what, uh, what action are you looking for tonight, Brenton?
If the council is comfortable with taking action on it, you can. If you want to wait or table, you can, either one.
This is what we know of.
This is what we know.
The running tally of what we know that will be updated pretty much quarterly as numbers become more real, right?
That's very likely.
So I have an issue with that. It, it gives us a good placeholder for what we know is coming and what we need to plan for physically for strategic budgeting, Matt, which is a really big thing, so I'm not opposed.
Are you planning on putting this out to the public then?
Yeah, I would put it up on our website, and we'd probably clean it up. We have a couple of different ways to reflecting it, I tried to just summarize and simplify it as much as I could in the memo here. I have a spreadsheet, it isn't print, really printer-friendly, but we're trying to have different ways to relay this out. I mean, one idea is even to map it out, and that's something that we've worked with interstate before on, just doing mapping of them.
I think that's a good idea, I don't think residents generally know where all of these places are if they're not living in the neighborhood. And I do like this format, I think it looks very clear, the funding sources listed.
And I appreciate, I appreciate all the work and effort that I know went into this project.
Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion.
Would the, I'll go ahead and make a motion to improve the current version of the capital improvement plan as presented by nineteen twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, moving on to number fourteen, Southern Valley Fire and Rescue Station, um, we have a request for a re- reduced water base fee. And with that, it's Naomi and Brenton.
So I just touched base on this here, um, in regards to, we had a request from Fire Manager saying, yes, Councilmember Berklin was talking to Chief Mahoney in regards to, uh, how water costs for fire can be reduced. Ultimately, my understanding is, one's idea generate, was generated was, the fire hall currently use, has a four-inch meter. We charge two hundred fifty-five dollars per month for a four-inch meter, and fire hall, that's what they have. A two-inch meter has a base rate of seventy-six dollars per month. So my understanding is the request is to, uh, charge the fire department, Southern Valley Fire, at the two-inch meter rate instead of four-inch. That would have annual impact of two thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars. That would be a council action, if you guys would like to do that. We do buy our water from Casserole Water, uh, so therefore, if you're looking at, like, a change or anything, cost per a thousand, I wouldn't recommend that because we have to buy that from them. If you're looking at the adjustment based on water meter rate, that would be a council decision.
Why, why don't we just change the meter to a two-inch meter and change things online to?
So my understanding is there, the plumbing within the fire hall, and Chris could probably answer it better than I can, but it's set up for a four-inch meter? So to, it could, it could reduce the reading ability.
After the meter reduces down to two and a half, so...
After the meter?
Yeah.
So I think there's other ways we can tackle this. I, I don't want to change policy at this point, because if I do it for you, then I'd do it for the schools, and I gotta do it for everybody else that comes here. But I think there's other ways if you're looking for a break on water usage, if you're not actually using a lot of water.
Couple of months ago, we, when we went through the whole billing and found the errors and then fixed it, and then we realized this was the new charge. We actually wanted to just switch to a two-inch, and even the state plumber, uh, inspector was okay with it, because he was the one that inspected the building to begin with. Adam is cautious on it because of the install for it and the piping, um, so there might have to be some reworking that's done. So from the extensive project to this one, it was a shot to try to see if we could make an adjustment on this end.
Yeah, I understand, but you're asking us to modify policy, and that doesn't make sense, right? Because if I do it for you, then it's going to set a precedence for other people. So I think there's other methodologies if you want to get a two thousand dollar credit and not, you're firing a hard round of things, don't we?
A handful of different things, no, one thing, one thing...
Or something else instead of changing this, or saying, if you want a two-inch meter, then get a two-inch meter and change your infrastructure.
So...
Right, we, which we were willing to do, and we said we'd pay for it and all that, it's just, we haven't gotten much feedback until the other day when they said that it might be a piping issue and having to reduce it down, but...
I do have a question, Chris, because I had a resident reach out to me, and they had said that they're confused because they thought that, um, we should, that everyone, commercial-wise, was supposed to actually be at a six-inch.
No.
And I, I'm like, I don't know anything about these water mains, um, but they said that it was supposed to be code that we were... And I was like, well, the fire department's the only entity in town that is currently at a four-inch.
At, at a four-inch meter?
A four-inch main.
Or four-inch pipe, nobody else, nobody else is...
Nobody else is.
For the city of horse customers, you have to remember, our, our service area is not the entire city, so you have Casserole. So like the schools, for example, those would be a larger meter. Horse Elementary, I believe, is a two, is that correct?
But they're not, but they're, and they're not horse customers?
Horse Elementary is, but the middle school and high school are not.
They're straight to Casserole, they work directly with Casserole.
So ours is, when you're talking about larger users or meters, uh, the elementary school, the fire hall, and I think maybe just a few, okay, you know, other places may, don't like in industrial park, for example, we may have some of that. But your larger meters, very rarely do you really need a larger meter. You get a lot more flow of them, that's why you'd see it, or like your bigger buildings, so they would have your bigger meters. But like residential purposes, or we don't have really a whole lot of big facilities, they're not on larger.
First time after a call, we're just filling them off the hydrant.
Off the hydrant, so you're not actually using the water source?
Oh, the only, the only time we use the ones in the bays is if we're doing training or something that's not related to a call. But even then, like...
Or washing trucks or something, right?
Not even that, we use the garden hose hook up.
Okay, but then that brings up a weird question, if you're using the hydrant, are you paying for the water?
No.
No.
So another thing to, can, sorry, really quick, uh, the concern Adam brought up was, if you reduce down to a two-inch meter, that could impact the accuracy of that two-inch meter. So, and I'm just paraphrasing it, I can read you exactly what you said, but paraphrase version is the accuracy of the meter is less.
There's a length that it reads, and if you do it too close to the meter, it messes with things. So there is a, if you look at your meter, your house, there's a meter bar in there, to make sure that the flows, you can form through that area. So I don't know how their plumbing is laid out or whatever, that's typical of the reasoning why you keep it a certain distance, and that's where the meters get their accuracy.
So why are we messing with the meters? Like I said, if you're looking for a break on something, I think there's other ways we can do it besides this.
Well, I guess I wasn't aware about, Chris, like, I mean, if you guys are using the hydrant, like, how are we charging for that, though?
We're not, we don't.
We don't.
We don't have a meter on the hydrants.
But so then, in essence, they're, they're using their water like a resident, and I don't, I guess I don't know that they should have to be charged for...
We, we average like twenty-five hundred gallons a month.
For a higher rate. I mean, it's probably not the, maybe it's not the right answer, but I guess I wouldn't see the point of going too expensive of making them switch their plumbing. I would just be more inclined to, uh, leave their plumbing alone and charge them at the lower rate.
Stephanie, what I'm saying is, leave the meter in place, leave the charges in place, and if we need to do something, we find another avenue to do it.
And I, I'm open...
We don't fuck around, pardon me, we don't screw around with the plumbing, we don't screw around with the meter.
I'm, I'm open to that, too, I guess, I mean, to me, this seems a pretty easy way to do it as well, but, uh, I mean, I'm open. I su- I support, I support the concept.
The other reason I don't like it is because it sets precedent for others to come here and say, well, you did it for them, why don't you do it for us?
I mean, Brenton just said there, we don't have anybody else in...
There are some, not many.
No, that are our customer?
Not our four.
Exactly, so there isn't anybody else.
Does that mean that nobody that's on the six is going to come and ask the same question?
We don't have anybody with four or six.
Industrial Park, you said?
Industrial High Six?
You bet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So Industrial Park, and then...
Customers we have that could come in and say...
I thought the four was top of those, like, the top of the, so what, what would you be doing? What would your be, what would your idea be if you wanted to do something different? Like, as far as you mentioned other ideas?
Shoot.
I, I would have to look at their budget to identify that, but I'm sure that there's something that could be done. I mean, we work closely together. We spend a proportion of funds with the fire department. I'm sure that there's a two thousand dollar adjustment that could be made somewhere that could level the playing field.
I'm just asking. I'm, you mentioned different ideas.
Yeah, I don't, I, I would, I would have to look at it to look at what would be legal and what would be fair. But, um, as far as that goes, I'm sure there's other methods besides changing the policy and furthermore, even considering changing plumbing.
Yeah.
God forbid, they may just need that someday down the road. You know what I mean?
Okay, maybe I got way too into the weeds with this, but in an effort to understand the situation, I had quite a few conversations and was just sort of digging into this issue. Um, and I do really respect that you're looking at where all of your taxpayer dollars are being spent and looking for ways to be more financially responsible. From, okay, from the conversations I had, it did sound like the four inch water mains are necessary or highly encouraged for the sprinkler systems in your building?
Totally separate system.
Okay, so we're not talking about bringing water into your sprinkler system?
Nope. Sprinkler, the sprinkler, uh, system is on a totally different piping.
Okay.
This is, this is just local use water.
Okay. Okay, so we're not talking about that.
But it's handy to have a four inch.
Right.
In the event that they do need to quickly fill up a truck and something's wrong or there's another vehicle using the hydrant, I mean, it, it's nice to have a second source. I would certainly not want to take that away and especially if it comes down to the, you know, accuracy of the metering, if that's needed for the flow. Let's, let's do something a little more creative. We can always put outside the box to the council.
I agree.
Tell me to work with fire department, no issues. Just, I think we can do it better without setting precedents.
I mean, I'd, I'd be fine if you wanted to, if you wanted to look at something else, I'm fine with that. I just, I told Chris that I would get the discussion rolling.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, you know, I, I do care about the, the, um, the fire department. I do feel like we have, um, we have them working and taking care of our community and they're also, you know, not just taking care of our community, but they're also putting in a lot of, um, effort to have the classes and, um, engage in the students. I mean, my little guy broke his arm and I, he got a little goody bag from the fire department, which was like
That's awesome. I love hearing that.
the sweetest thing. And so I feel like small town, small towns really, um, benefit from, from our, from our, um, fire and rescue. And so I told Chris that I would bring up the idea if that's what he wanted to do. But if you guys want to look at a different way of, of helping, I have no problem with that.
I, I think there's, I think there's any number of ways we can look at. I mean, we have bean days coming up. If we wanna do a fundraiser or drive and, and donate funds to fire, I'm game for that. We can, I, this two thousand dollars we're talking about here, but we're also talking about changing a policy or deviating from a policy that could open doors elsewhere. We can do that.
I mean, I just thought it would be maybe considered like a first responder discount.
There you go.
Not cha- not changing the policy per se, but being a, a discounted for the two inch, uh, base pay versus the four inch.
Open to discussion on what fits because we're beholden to different entities with this. So, I don't know, Lucas?
In terms of a different idea, do you think it may have to be?
I think it would take further discussion, but I'm very open to it all.
When we talk about the policy, um, does the policy require that the, a business or the fire hall have the four inch water meter? I mean, I recognize there's a policy on what rates were charged for different.
Hell no.
So that, that was what was sized with the building when it was constructed. Uh, typically when we have somebody come in, they're, they may, so, let, let's say a building is built, residential is almost always a three quarter inch or a five eighths inch. Very rarely would you see a residential that is bigger. I could only think of a couple of houses probably within ten miles of here that would probably fall under that. Um, when you have businesses, a lot of times their architects will work with our, our engineers and staff of just sizing, they may have their initial request and then we go, okay, does that make sense or not? Um, but it's typically done during the construction phase in collaboration with the city to figure out what is the best meter for the building being built. Um, if our staff and engineering are adamant that, say, somebody needs a four inch and they're thinking they need a two, they're typically going with the four inch because of the flows and safety, because what happens at times is, well, somebody will say, oh, I need a two inch. Then they don't have the flow through their building. And then they're upset because they don't have water pressure they need. So for the fire hall, it's not as big, but I'm assuming the reason they're four inches is probably for the ability to fill up trucks and things like that quicker than a two inch would do. I, that would be my assumption of why they have that.
Four inch was overkill probably from the beginning because it's reduced right out, right out the gate to a two and a half. Um, even if we switch to a two inch line, we're really not gonna see much of a difference in filling trucks. I mean, at most, they probably should have put a three inch. But going from a four to a two, we're really not gonna see the difference for the often use of it. Um, and the application that we use it for, even like host testing and stuff, it's gated down to an inch and a half. So.
Two and four is pretty standard.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I think we can do it differently without necessarily having to make changes. And furthermore, you know, adjusting the metering or anything like that. I, I'd, I'd like to keep the four inch meter on as soon as I have the capability.
Which is, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely need it because God forbid someone's house goes up and you need to go through more than one truck. And so if a blockage or something's going on, you gotta wait, you know? I'd rather have that capability. And if we have to come up with a two thousand dollars difference to help you out, so be it, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
We might have, we might have just saved three thousand dollars on the land deal. So there you go. That's a, that's a, a good opportunity right there. I'd rather have that in our community than something that we gotta mull and screw around with maintaining. Be more than happy to spend less funds, you know? Make sure that we can get to people and take care of them.
So with the funding that we get, um, I think we do like, what, ten percent?
So we do give our fire department ten percent of our state aid that we get. In addition, Park District gets ten percent. So that was a, a couple of years ago, when the state indicated that you should be consistent or do what levels were done years ago. Years ago, I believe there wasn't anything given from state aid, but our council decided to do a ten percent for parks and ten percent for fire. So, uh, Councilmember Wright, it's concern of if you do sign for one with the other, you probably would have Park District ask for additional state aid. So it's just, just be prepared of that request if you're all right with giving a little bit more. That is an option. Um, if you're going down the avenue of state aid, I would just ask her, do you know, you know, is, are other entities giving the state aid also or just horse or what's going on there? So.
If you guys aren't inclined to, um, give him a, a base rate of the two inch, I don't, I'm out, I'm fresh out of options to help. So I, I have no idea how to, um, I don't know how to remedy it. So.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna make a motion to decline the request for a reduced water base fee. But I'm also gonna pan in that motion with passing staff, with working with the fire department to identify, uh, equivalent funds that could somehow be remedied to make this right. And that could be anything from, you know, a fundraiser, bean days to any number of things, but I'd like to make that right.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Um, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
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 I'll break the tie. Um, motion passes. Okay, we will work with you to find a two thousand dollars somewhere.
All right, moving on to item number fifteen. Is the Old Town Zoning District. Um, this is, this will be with me and Jace, uh, bringing this up. Um, I believe it was two and a half weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, I had a resident reach out, um, and point out that the Old Town Zoning District, um, does not allow single family homes, uh, currently in our land use, um, table, I believe, for the Old Town Zoning District. And, um, in talking with Jason and I, um, we wanted to bring it at least up in front of council, uh, just to have discussion, to see where this goes next. So, uh, with that, I will let Jace go ahead and continue on.
Uh, yes, Mr. Members of the council. So with the adoption of the twenty twenty-four land use ordinance, uh, there was a removal of several of the existing zoning districts of the city and applying a new set of zoning districts in com- earning compliance with the, the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. And within the comprehensive plan, there is, uh, two small town or small area plans, uh, seventeen seventy-six and the Old Town, uh, district. Uh, those were then adopted as new zoning districts and applied to the areas defined within the comprehensive, or within the, uh, the land use ordinance and the zoning, uh, map. And from there, uh, there were some other tweaks to switch property back to egg for tax purposes, but for the most part, they were applied where the old, the small area plans, uh, were defined. From that point, obviously, we've gone on and started to look at a, or downtown neighborhood plan to help refine that small area plan and get more in line with what the residents of the, the city were looking for in terms of policy, uh, concepts, connection points, uh, et cetera. Um, from that point, and, and one thing I guess I would point out in terms of the future land, or the, not the future land use map, the land use table, uh, from that is the land use table should be looked at from a point of new uses. Meaning, single family homes in terms of, of where they can be allowed per the Old Town District are not permitted on primary frontage, i.e. Main Street. Anything of the secondary streets, they do allow for that. But in terms of existing uses, those are governed under a different portion of the ordinance, which is the, uh, the non-conforming use. And dating back to even Russ Sarr being on the planning and commission, he and I have worked together because that was the concern if we are implementing the zoning districts into this area, that there would be several affected properties that in a typical non-conforming situation, they're not allowed to expand or do anything into their property. Um, and then again, with all non-conforming uses, they, as long as they maintain that current use of that property for twelve consecutive months, or the use of the property does not cease to exist for twelve consecutive months, um, they'll allow to continue in perpetuity. To let that even more so be true, we did add some additional language into the non-conforming section to pretty much make sure that, that residents that were affected by this, uh, were able to rebuild, uh, and reconstruct, modify any of their existing property, um, in the event of a vandalism, fire tornadoes, um, weather events can do that. So what we ended up adding is a repair replacement of non-conforming single family dwellings. And this is specific to properties that were hit with the seventeen seventy-six district and the Old Town. And then likely some of the mixed use stuff that was added within the zoning map. And long story short, basically it requires that a finding that the resulting building footprint of what was there is in twenty percent of the size of the building before such change, and that's twenty percent greater and twenty percent less. So there is room to modify and add on to these houses as well. Um, and then the replacement of that non-conforming family is commenced within one year and then they diligently, diligently pursue that work to get that done. So we've put extra steps in here to make sure that the properties that are on there or affected by this really won't see any change or shouldn't see any change because they have the outright ability to reconstruct what they have, even though it may not be listed as a permitted use on Main Street. The intent was never to push anyone out of their home. And we've walked around those landmines through several things, through the land use ordinance, through the downtown neighborhood plan that we're working on, where, whether it be the rail line or cutting the conceptions short or conceptual short of the fire hall and not showing any new improvements to these residences or residential properties that are on Main Street. Um, we've reduced the scale on a lot of this stuff just to try to fit what the residents through all of our public outreach have been asking for in terms of redeveloping the core of the city and providing that kind of commercial sustainability that the city is looking for in terms of getting sales taxed to help out with some of these projects.
Okay, so after all of that. Thank you. Um, my, my concern to you, uh, back then on that phone call was, um, I'll, I'll, I'll take this residence, uh, point of their insurance company. If their insurance company looks at that table, um, I'm going to assume they're only gonna look at that table. They're not gonna read all the fine print below it. Would that be a fair suggest, or a fair assumption?
I, I wouldn't say it's a fair assumption. I, I mean, I've been.
Without making Jace assume, I think the, the better process for this is if a homeowner is struggling or has an issue with an insurance provider that has an issue with the city zoning, we can certainly work with the insurance provider to walk through the grandfather clauses and to say that these exemption, exemptions were built in to the land use code for these situations and, and present them with, with this information. And I think that would remedy any concerns that they might have.
What would it, what would an insurance company have questions about? Or, I mean, what would, what would the issue be?
So my understanding with this one is we have a property owner that, um, their insurance provider was made aware that residential, uh, uses are not allowed in the Old Town District. And because of that, the insurance provider said that they were going to threaten, or excuse me, the insurance provider said that they were going to, uh, no longer provide coverage for that reason. Uh, and so we are trying to prevent that from happening. So again, if, if that is the issue, city staff, myself will be more than willing to work with the insurance provider to provide this information to them and to work through, uh, any issues that they might have.
Have you had the insurance company ever tell you?
No, ma'am.
If they're thinking about dropping the resident, you would think they would have reached out to you.
I would think that the resident would be responsible to come in and connect the insurance company with the city. Because they're homeowners insurance.
Fair enough. And I'll, I'll have you come up here to the podium. And the scenario we're talking about, I believe, is hypothetical right now. It has not happened?
Um, actually, it happened in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
So TJ Krenzel, five oh one Main Street, when I bought my house in two thousand and thirteen, uh, we found out through bank paperwork and stuff, it was zoned commercial. All of Main Street had been blanket zoned commercial. Um, we had to go to the city because the bank threatened that they could pull the mortgage. The insurance company was threatening they could drop insurance. Because if I were to have a fire, anything happened, the city could literally say, well, we're not gonna let you build again. Because you're not, you don't meet the zoning requirements.
So if you're saying that it was zoned commercial, like you want it to live in it?
Yes. We had it changed in two thousand and fourteen. If you guys look in your history, all of Main Street was changed to a residential. Every single, single family dwelling on Main Street had been pulled out of commercial and put into residential. Then you guys adopted a new zoning map or whatever you went with in twenty twenty-four with no notification to us. Um, and changed all of our zoning back again. So now I'm fighting the same fight that I fought ten years ago.
So did, how did they find out that it?
I found out it changed. I'm not going to tell my insurance company or bank that it changed because I don't want to have that battle again. But I'm asking you guys to change us back to residential, which is what we were and what we should have stayed at unless you guys notified us of a change so we could come in and have a discussion on it. You guys didn't notify us of any zoning changes. So now every single, single family dwelling on Main Street was changed to this Old Town zone and we're non-conforming. We don't meet the requirements of the zone that we're zoned in.
I just want to be clear, but you have not received a letter from them saying.
I have not, no.
Okay.
But if something were to happen, now it's another battle and I'm not gonna sit here and watch it turn into that again.
Well, I would.
I don't want my zoning to be Old Town. I want it to be residential, which is what I fought for ten years ago.
So, so just a couple of things. One, the city would be willing to work with your insurance provider to provide this information, the explanation as to the, the land use code requirements. And, and again, this was all done through the city's adoption of the land use code. Notices were sent out through that process, uh, put in the paper, uh, on the website, et cetera. Uh, so that was all done during that time. Uh, and so one option is the city will work with your insurance provider to say that this exemption was built in to the land use code for that reasoning. Uh, the other thing I would say is, uh, you still have the right to, uh, rezone your property. Uh, that is a process that requires you to, uh, file an application with the city and then go through, uh, a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then, uh, with this body as well, another public hearing. Uh, and so you still have that right if you desire. I'm not saying that, uh, the planning commission will recommend approval, denial, conditional approval, or the council accept their recommendation, but. or the council accept their recommendation, but those are some additional information for this and for you.
I guess I don't feel that I should have to waste my time to do that again, being I had to do it once already, took me four months. And the city did this to me. Now you guys changed it and didn't discuss anything with any of us. You also have the trailer court zoned wrong. You have that Old Town when your new zoning plan shows that you have a zoning for mobile and modular homes. But you guys just blanket statement it all into Old Town.
Is that because of future land use map?
That is, that is correct. It's not a wrong zoning district. It was done by design in terms of-
Do I design intentionally for what that part of town will eventually look like?
So you're just telling me you'd rather just not have me there, basically?
We're not saying anything of the sort. We're basing our zoning off of the future land use map long term.
Well, and and to that point, again, we've put a bunch of effort into making sure that you aren't forced out of it. We've put additional information in non-conforming that doesn't exist in most non-conforming stature or statute to allow you to rebuild and even expand your footprint. Non-conforming statutes don't allow people to normally expand footprint of a non-conforming building.
Let me ask you this then. If I came to the council and said, okay, I'm in, I'm non-conforming, but I want to build a garage or tear down my small house and build a bigger house because that was my plan when I bought the place, and that's why I fought so hard to get my zoning changed properly, because I wanted to build a Rambler, fifteen hundred square foot Rambler, new footprint, everything. If I come to you guys now and ask for that, do you just deny my permit because you don't want that on Main Street?
No.
Because that's how you're writing it.
So so as long as it complies with, as Jace read through, the non-conforming use, that permit wouldn't even go to the city council. The city handles building permits internally as staff. And as long as it complies with what the what the ordinances provide for, then you could expand-
Your ordinance says I can only expand up to twenty percent.
Yeah, so I don't know how-
I have an eight hundred square foot house.
I don't know what math is on that.
It's maybe a little bit off, it's maybe a little off topic, but it it is interesting. If if he were to want to sell his home, what would happen?
That's a great question.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
He he could sell it as a single-family home. As long as it's occupied within a twelve-month period, the non-conforming status remains.
So, okay, so-
And if he's continuing to live in it, so even if he's living and it's on the market, and is, he can sell it residentially. He could also sell it commercially.
Have you ever tried to sell a house that's non-conforming?
Myself, no. But we-
Would it affect my sale price?
I haven't seen it, but we've sent letters to appraisers all the time about non-conforming status of lots.
So yeah, so I mean, Jace, it's change of tendency or ownership is is built into the land use code as well. And again, we can go through all this stuff, but if if you don't like the information that we are providing through the ordinances, you do have the option to apply for a rezone.
I guess I have to take that path again. I just feel that it's-
Is that going to cost him money to do that?
I mean, yeah, that's what it costs anyone that wants to do a rezone.
That's the problem.
The council, if the council desires-
I've already done it.
Yeah, we could definitely waive that.
And every single one of my neighbors have done this already. There's what, eight houses on Main Street?
Yeah, I think that we could waive those fees for all the neighbors.
For anybody who was auto rezoned by the city to zone back to what they were originally?
And the council has done that before. I can't remember a situation now, but you've done that before where you've waived certain fees for specific situations.
Yeah, I I think it would be a simple application, go down, sit down, fill out an application. They'll handle it at staff level. It doesn't need to be the council for us, and we have no problem waiving those fees. If this is something that is-
Well, clar- clarify, yeah. If it's, if he's requesting to rezone, yes, that has to go through a building permit. The building permit process is, if he follows the ordinance and is in compliance with the requirements under the ordinance, that permit would be handled internally by by staff. And the other thing to consider too, with a rezone of just one parcel in a district, the Planning Commission and the City Council need to be cognizant of spot zoning because that would be ripe for a spot zoning issue.
Which is what we did previous. As soon as mine went through, everybody got together and came in and planning and zoning redid it. And in two thousand and fourteen, we were literally told that they had just blanket zoned everything commercial on Main Street because it was Main Street. And I understand that you guys want to do a downtown district and stuff like that, but you need to take into account of when you change things for our properties, you're affecting lives. You're not just trying to make a better downtown or whatever. You're, you affect every aspect of my property when you do that.
And as Jace referenced, the city put significant effort into that. That, I mean, I was part of this language change too. It's typically when there's non-conforming use, it does not allow you to to expand it. If it gets burnt down, it doesn't allow you to rebuild, and the city took that into consideration and and added those in, and that that's exactly why it was done, was to protect the interests of those who had properties.
I do see his point, though. If he only has an eight hundred square foot house at the moment, twenty percent greater than that, it still isn't that much more of a house, and that's, it's no offense to you, I'm just-
And this was our argument when I went through this in two thousand and fourteen was, I was planning that I want to build a new house there. I bought my place because I wanted to stay in Horus. Now I don't want to stay in Horus if I can't build what essentially I wanted. I get it, it's Main Street, but Main Street, small-town Main Streets have residential homes on them. We don't have to kick everybody out.
So are there, were there addition additional restrictions on lot usage when it switched to commercial versus residential? When you're saying, was it, what did you say, twenty percent?
Twenty percent is all I could build bigger than what I have currently. So my footprint can only be twenty percent bigger.
So you can go from eight hundred to nine sixty?
Right. And you guys tie our hands with these these blanket zonings. It doesn't-
Does the twenty percent have anything to do with this, though? Like-
If if it's left as Old Town, yes.
So-
And I believe our, what I got it changed to, and I have the paperwork at home, I kept everything from when we did this. I believe it was R one, if I remember correctly, was what we were changed into. And that was my home. The trailer court had its own zoning at that time under the old zoning map. And then all the homes on the other side of the street from me, on which would be the east side of Main Street.
And in a normal, and in a normal rezone process, there's a public, right? You go through a public hearing and you go through all that process. I mean, I guess I I will just say as a comment that I I have, I am, and I always was uncomfortable with the fact that properties were auto-rezoned because we took the public hearing away from people. We took notification to adjacent landowners and the current landowners of what was happening.
There there were public hearings through this adoption of the land use code and notices and-
Yeah, but I don't know that there was specific, well, you know what, I'll own it. I was on council, I was new. I didn't even know. I I didn't even know that there were swaths that were auto rezoned, so I don't know if letters went out. Did letters go out to residents like a like, like a normal rezone?
I-
Maybe I misunderstood.
We never got a letter.
I would venture to say it was newspaper and then on the city's website.
Okay, because normally, don't we like properties within so many three hundred feet or whatever get a notice?
Yes.
Yes, typically, when there's a rezone, you send a letter to the property that is rezoning and adjacent properties. We never got that. This was just an adopted blanket rezone for the city. And if you put it on Facebook or published it in whatever paper, who reads a paper anymore? Come on.
All right, guys, what do you want to do?
I don't know what you're asking.
Uh, right now, it's just discussion. We can, I believe we can make it into a motion?
Well, I would also mind you that anything land use related requires Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Ask you to take it back to planning and zoning?
Take what back?
Yeah, I don't know what you're-
We need to make some sort of, you know, discussion here as to what we would want you guys to do to try to remedy this, whether we ask them to, um-
Well, and I mean, keep in mind with whatever this decision is, you're potentially changing an entire chapter of your land use code with the impact of of this move.
If we ask for the land use code to be changed, otherwise if we ask them to-
If you're going to have have a property owner, get a collective of property owners adjacent to Main Street, rezone their their entire property, that kind of takes away your Old Town District. I don't know how big the district is. Do you see my point?
I understand your point, sir.
It also nullifies a study that's been ongoing for a year and a half, too.
Uh, yeah, I would just, I would just caution any-
You guys nullified the work I did in two thousand and fourteen.
We didn't.
You did.
It's, it's, it was considered and and you still have the right to use your property for residential uses.
So would would the the council be willing then to entertain a variance then to allow him to build a Rambler that would be able to fit on that property if it was zoned R one, I guess is my question right now. Right now, we would be preventing him from changing-
Are you, are you currently trying to build or are you submitting it?
Not at the moment, no, I want to-
And so I I just don't know if we're willing to make decisions.
I am asking that we get our zoning changed back. I guess if I have to go to Planning and Zoning and get a petition with my neighbors to do that again, I will do the legwork again because I'm not afraid of legwork. What pisses me off is that I have to do it again. You guys forced me to do it again.
And what I, what I'm trying to prevent is you from having to go through, having to do anything. But I I don't know if anything needs to be done.
Uh, yeah, my zoning needs to be changed back to residential. I don't want to be-
For what purp-, but for what purpose? Because right now, it, one, your insurance is not dropping you, and you don't plan, two, you don't plan on building right now. And so I just question what actually needs to be done because right now-
Purpose did it need to be changed to Old Town?
Because the city's whole desire with the land use code was to have that district be the Old Town District.
So the purpose was to eventually clear us out of our homes.
No, the purpose is not, it's not. It's absolutely not, and that's why the exceptions were built into it. I'm I'm serious. There was a lot of time spent, and and Jace is right, with the former Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was a lot of thought and effort put into working through these these non-conforming sections of the ordinance. It was to protect property owners like yourself, and and so to say it's to kick anyone out, it's not.
My hands, though. My hands are tied to a point. Tell me they're not.
I am telling you they're not because there's, there's currently nothing that is is preventing you from doing anything. You're not currently building, and your insurance provider is not canceling your policy.
Could I look at it from the opposite direction? Say, say, for instance, it was zoned back to residential, and then we move forward with our plan and I know who knows what. He he wants to sell in the future. Could, could, could the rezone at that time take place to Old Town or Commercial if some other business or entity wanted to move in there? I'm just trying to look at it from the different perspective.
So that'd still tie his hands in the sense that the sale is, the sale is contingent upon somebody agreeing with them knowing they're going into a di- a different zoning.
No, I mean, say it goes back to residential, and it's just residential, and then at some point TJ wants to move or something, and then somebody's like, well, hey, you know what, I'd like to put a flower shop here. At that time, could it be entertained? Yeah, let's, let's rezone that to whatever that use would be. I'm just trying to look at other options.
I I see what you're saying, but I also wonder, I don't know if a business would even know that it's available to do because it's not zoned. It wouldn't have that future land use to it.
That's the exact conversation they had when I redid this previously. And the comments that were made at that Planning and Zoning meetings, because I went to multiple of them, were that, yes, we will change you guys back to residential, and then in the future, if somebody wanted to put a business like a Walmart on Main Street, then they could come in and petition the city to change it.
It sounds to me as if this requires a little more discussion. So I'm going to request that we table this for the time being. I would encourage you to set up a meeting with our city administrator, and he'll get the necessary parties involved into our office. Express your wishes. They can talk to you about what they know policy-wise, and then they can come to us once we have some more firm information, because I don't know if we're going to solve this tonight. And I'm not saying that I don't want to take action on it. I'm saying, let's all get our bearings, let's do the research, let's get the proper parties involved so that we're having more productive conversation.
Yep.
In the meantime, if you do hear from your insurance or your bank, by all means, hit up Lucas. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
We will re-discuss this with you again.
I appreciate it.
We want to make sure we come to some resolution, but we're not, there's, there's enough questions being thrown out here just from what I can hear. We're not going to solve it, and I think it takes a little more care and diligence. So let's do it. Let's all just sleep on it, and then let's put some, put our heads together and come up with some really productive ideas.
I mean, I would like, I mean, are you gonna, I would like to make sure a meeting happens between-
Absolutely.
Mr. Krenzel and the city and our attorney and Breton and Jace, whoever needs to be there. Are you willing to set up an appointment with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate it, and we appreciate your coming tonight.
Yes, sir.
It's good to hear this.
It's just heartbreaking to see what I fought so hard for. Just got pens wiped away without a conversation. And to me, that's completely unacceptable. I mean, I fought really hard when I bought my house to make sure I got to keep my house and plan for my future. And now it's just, well, this is your future, but your future has stipulations.
Well, unfortunately, sometimes when we do these large policy changes, things get a little, and it appears that's what happened here. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And thank you for showing up tonight. I appreciate it.
TJ, if you could just shoot me an email with availability of what works best for you, and then I'll coordinate with everybody. Yep.
All right. Moving on to number sixteen, the engineering report from Jim.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight, I've got thirteen things to run through with you. They're relatively quick. They're just update-type things. Don't get, don't get too excited about it. So we'll start at the south and work our way to the north with a couple sprinkles of east and west in between. So the first thing I had was Maple Lake Estates, the final pavement lift. Concrete work has been completed out there. The milling has been completed. Border States did some issues with their plant, so their plan was to pave late last week. That didn't happen. Their plan was to pave this week. Tomorrow doesn't look real dry, and neither does Wednesday morning. So we'll see. I've got a question mark written by it on my, on my thing. So same is holding true for Lakeview Edition, the final pavement lift. The milling was complete, and the paving was maybe this week. Cup Creek Edition, the final pavement lift, the same milling complete, and the paving would be potentially this week. The punch list is being worked on in multiple projects. Kind of got a little dose of summer there for a couple days, and now we're back into maybe a little bit more of the spring. So they are working on punch list items on sixty-fourth, both the walls. There's some Vista work, sixty-six, sixty-fourth, so there's quite a bit of miscellaneous work and incidental work that's being done. We'll get in, back into the swing of things with progressive estimates and more formal updates next month, the first meeting of of June, just with the way that the construction is going. Rivers Edge Second, the majority of the sidewalk is complete. Some small shared use path remains. Topsoiling of boulevards and then mass grating of some of the drainage areas. I've met with some of the Dreamfield employ-, well, one of the Dreamfields residents about some grading and drainage in their backyard adjacent to the Rivers Edge Second. Kind of give them an idea of how things are supposed to work, and then reassurance that they aren't complete yet with what they have to do between the two projects. There is some re-grading right south of Seventy-sixth Avenue, and then some grading to be done on the south side of that. Luther Avenue, the public input meeting is tomorrow at five thirty in here. The presentation starts at six. There's just a little kind of informal, if you have some questions, come at five thirty, and if we can answer them, good. And then if not, you can wait for the presentation. We did have the, excuse me, public input meeting for the Sparks Edition and Eighth Avenue last week, Thursday. We had three residents show up, and one of them stayed for the presentation. So she was very looking forward for to Eighth Avenue, and I believe she provided us with a a public input comment that said, I can't wait for it to get done, or something along those lines. So we don't get a lot of positive feedback on some of these things, so it was nice to kind of see some of that, too. So, uh, plan review is ongoing. Our, for, as Brenton talked about with the CIP, we got Oak Valley and Willow Grove. Those are the two that are the furthest along in the, in the design review process. We met with Fargo a couple weeks ago on some MOUs of as far as sanitary sewer and graveling and maintenance of Veterans Boulevard or Fifty-seventh between the two cities. So originally, the agreements were for south of Seventy-sixth Avenue. Our request was to look at the whole Seventy-sixth, not Seventy-sixth Avenue, look at all of Veterans because sixty-fourth is going to be approved here on the Fargo side in the next couple of years. City of Horus has done some improvement on the, on the Horus side of it, a little bit of a gap in the middle there. So we're working on filling in that gap with some of what Fargo's doing, but I think that will increase the traffic on that sixty-fourth corridor. So they're going to work on that agreement to bringing that back. We do have a line in the sand now drawn as far as where the sewer is going to connect with Fargo, and it sounds like it's going to be Seventy-sixth Avenue and Veterans. That's where we talked about there are some things that need to be implemented, and I don't know if I'm taking some of your thunder, Brenton, from, from your report, but those things that we had talked about. So some of those agreements with the neighboring cities are kind of pushed forward along those lines. So Deer Creek Parkway, the resolution necessity period, we're in the middle of that right now, so we will get some petitions, I'm assuming, on that project. At the last meeting, there were some residents who came in to voice their, we relayed their comments from the public input, and they wanted to be here too to make sure of that.
Right. Oh, well, I, I, yes, you're right.
Yeah.
We go up Veterans to Seventy-sixth, then we kick over Seventy-sixth to Forty-fifth.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, as you had alluded to earlier in the CIP discussion, uh, Conrout Seventeen Shared Use Path, Eighty-first Avenue to the Roundabout, that one is being designed. We are, still are on the schedule for a late twenty-twenty-five bid letting. Um, we have done most of the bid lettings for the shared use pass in April of the year. We construct them, but this year with the way that, uh, some of the funding was set up in the DOT, they wanted it done by October, I believe it was, just in case there were some additional funds in there, so. Uh, it will be, it, yes, correct. So if we bid it in November, we can start it earlier and hopefully get it done in, it'd be twenty-six, either way. But instead of it dragging into the school year, we, yes, good point. You could start earlier than if you bid it in April, so. So we're still on that, on that timeframe of the October, November bid letting. Uh, I'm not quite sure if the DOT has solidified the projects that are on that yet, but we have got our environmental documents signed on that one since it is a federal one, and then it's a matter of working through the, um, get the plans and, and we've got some stuff scheduled with the city Public Works and Engineering Project Management to, to review some of that. When we get up closer to, uh, Circle K, Circle K's high, Roundabout's low.
Yes.
Making things, making things work in there, so. Plenty of opportunities for solutions there, so. Uh, street patching is ongoing. It's been a slow-going process. Border States is using a road crew, so it's just taking them some more time to do that. Special Assessment Commission, we met with the Special Assessment Commission last week Wednesday to review Rivers Edge Second, Cub Creek Second and Sixty-third Street. Um, there are seven projects to be assessed this year. In those three projects, took three hours. So by breaking it up, we're able to just take a little bit more time and get into some of the discussions and details on that, so. Um, the next round, we have to make some comments based on that. And then the next round is probably gonna be the walls and, and then sixty, uh, sixty-sixth, I believe is the other one, so. Um, I did read, get a resident reach out to me from Chestnut Ironwood. They were just curious about the process today and where we were at with the process. I told them that, um, the Special Assessment Commission is working through the projects and they haven't set a time for him yet to, to review the Chestnut Ironwood one. But I said, keep an eye out for the notices and then if I can, I'll try to make sure that they know when that, when that is, so. Um, anything else? That's what I had written down. That's my thirteen items and you didn't have to start the timer, so.
I'll keep it quick. Uh, Conrout Fourteen, um, please contact the county.
Yep.
Um, and then on the operations side, if we're gonna get the two to three inches of rain? Oh, I'm still on him yet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you were on here.
He's responding to.
No, I'm responding to him. Is there anything else?
I didn't use all my time up, so.
From the public works side, we're gonna get two to three inches of rain. Um, I'll let you, uh.
So the funny thing is that the last rain we got, you couldn't hardly tell it a couple days. It was so dry, so. I don't know if we're gonna get the same kind of luck with this one, but we'll be, we'll be watching the flows, 'cause I'm sure that they're going to be going up, so.
That is all.
I haven't got any nasty grams or nasty texts yet, so.
Can anybody else got questions for Jim?
Thank you.
All right, Brenton, what do you got?
Okay. I, I, I was confused a little bit too, so that's all right. Um, I'll try to run through, I just have a few items here. June twenty-six, nine AM, West Fargo City Hall, North Tua League of Cities is doing a regional listening session. If you would like to attend, please let me know so we could get you signed up for it. They're asking registration in advance for it.
When, where is that?
June twenty-six at West Fargo City Hall. But like I said, if you would like to attend, please let me know so we can get you registered for it. They do ask that you register in advance if possible. Um, we are looking into options for blinds, just to make sure you're aware of that, so we have some staff. Courtney is looking at that, and I should be meeting with Jeff and Stephanie, probably in the near future, touching base with them once we have different quotes on that. Um, so we won't be blinded by the evening light or sun. Um, council workshop next Thursday, Thursday next week on the twenty-ninth at six PM here. We'll be talking infrastructure, funding and infrastructure. Um, so I'll be ready for that one. And then the last one I had was Jace has been busy with getting together code enforcement letters for mainly high grass. I think there are a few, uh, miscellaneous type items too here or there, but majority of them are high grass. He's gotten about a third of the city done. We're at a hundred ninety-four code enforcement layers, so. Yeah, we encourage folks, please stay up on your mowing. We understand, you know, with rain, things like that, it's harder to get out. But overall, it has been fairly dry to where you could get mowing done. Uh, but we are trying to get a push done with that. Uh, and then, yes, the last one I had is, uh, we have, we had two seasonal employees start today and two, I believe, next week. So we'll be at, all four seasonal positions have been filled, so we're happy about that. That should help us quite a bit with, uh, the tree planting and also mowing, so we should have, hopefully be a little, be a little, be able to be a little more aggressive with our mowing than we have previous years, so. Knock on wood. That's what I had.
All right. Um, for me, uh, Brenton just stole my thunder for the, uh, HR portfolio, um, the hiring of the four seasonal people. Um, from the mayor's, uh, portfolio, I do have a meeting, I believe, next week that I'm bringing Brenton and Jace with.
This Thursday.
I believe it's this Thursday.
You, you picked the day, so.
Fair enough.
BIA?
Yep.
Yes, Thursday at four.
Fair enough. All right, um, and then just a reminder for the workshop next week, the twenty-ninth. Um, so, uh, glad you said that, 'cause I would've got the two mixed up. Um, and other than that, um, I've just been focusing on my regular day job, so I don't have a whole lot from the mayor's side. That's it. Sarah?
The only thing I have is some concerns that I mentioned prior to the meeting over the QA QC quality assurance, quality control, with the install going on, it sounds like that would. Um, according to my comments before the meeting, I'm hoping the staff will hear that. They'll not be accepting or signing off on that, and so those I just regret, that we can speak more in depth on that when I get back from holiday and go and see my brother who's hit suspension in the last step for his last three years of military service, I'm gonna go up and back over the, over every holiday. Um, so when I get back, we can talk more about that, but, um, that's really the only concern that I had at this time. And then obviously the, the pending rains coming, but everybody's on top of floors, so I'm happy with that. That's all I have.
Okay.
Get crazy. I had a couple things, um, with our planning and zoning at the last meeting. They reviewed and approved the site plan and design review for the, um, Heritage Middle School expansion. Um, they reviewed some proposed amendments to the mixed-use ordinance that, um, basically talked about scale of the buildings. Um, public hearings are gonna start, um, June tenth for that. Future land use map amendment number two, which, um, remember, we talked about the northwest uh, corner of County Road fourteen and County Road seventeen. Um, it was tabled, um, at the Planning and Zoning Commissioner's request, um, pending further discussion because there were two of them that were gone. Is that correct? If I remember? Yep, two members were not there, and so, um, Doug ran the meeting and he wanted to make sure that everybody was, um, in the loop, so. Um, that is pretty much it for the planning and zoning meeting. I do have a couple follow-up things. Um, Brent, did you guys, if I can read my writing, did you guys get gravel down yet on that Wall Avenue road? After Wall Avenue? Did we not talk about that the last meeting? You guys said you were gonna.
I have not heard update on that one, but I could check. I don't know if you're aware, but, yeah, I'll check by.
I suppose now it's all wet and gross out, but.
I know they were kinda, it was wet and then dried up, so I don't know.
Okay, please don't let that fall off.
No, we have gravel, uh, bidding and ordering. Yeah, that one was ordered. The other one was bidding out gravel, understanding exactly how much gravel we would wanna quote for. So that's what the staff is working on related to gravel.
Okay, um, got that. And then, um, Lucas, did we ever hear back from Justin, that email that I sent you guys? He hasn't? Oh, was it really Friday? My days are mixed up, 'cause I've been. I've been gone, so, um, to me, all days are weekdays right now. Okay, so I will give you more time. Uh, just an update, ICC, do you want an email regard, Rachel, regarding a, um, concerned resident? Actually, I don't think, I don't know if it's a resident, but he has a church in town and, um, they would like to be able to, um, have the same ability as the Park District to use the parks and be able to put up bouncy houses and celebrate the community and, um, um, or celebrate their business or whatever, so I did, um, send an email that included Lucas, Justin from the Parks and Rachel, since it's her portfolio, um, just to kind of see if they can start working on some kind of contract that would allow, um.
Like a simple waiver?
Yeah, like a waiver, something that would allow the, the, um, entity to be able to, to celebrate in the park. So, um, I guess maybe you, if you, if you find out, you can do the update on that.
Yep.
Um, and then I, I guess Brenton already talked about code enforcement with the hundred ninety-four properties so far, and that's not all of them. Um, I know at the last meeting, we did have a few residents that were a little bit upset about code enforcement and, um, the lack thereof in their mind, but please know, like, as you can see, we have a hundred and ninety-four so far. And it does take time. It is a process, um, so please know we are working on it. Um, you can definitely call up to the city and see if the property you're questioning is on the list and Jace can give you that information, um, just to let you know that they're working on it. Um, but also, Jace, I do have a question. With the hundred ninety-four so far that you're working on, are those developer lands mostly, or is it kind of split with residents developing? What, what, what are your thoughts?
I'd call it probably a seventy-thirty split towards developers.
Okay, so again, Lucas, I'm starting to get really frustrated with that.
Yeah, so we discussed this, uh, internally on options of what we need to do. I looked at the nuisance ordinance to see what changes we can incorporate into there because the last time we discussed it was, do we add an admin fee within that, um, within the ordinance to allow the city to collect an administrative fee on top of the, uh, the contractor's rate? 'Cause typically what the city does, calls a independent contractor, has them mow the property, they send a bill to the city, then the city levies that, uh, against the property, and so what we thought about doing now was just incorporating an administrative fee on top of the contractor's fee, because the city does have an expense of having to go through and, and do all this, absolutely.
And also, Lucas, as you know, what happens is they'll say, oh, I don't wanna do that, just send to the contractor. That's what they say.
Correct, and so the other thing I was gonna add to that is, uh, that's for the nuisance ordinance itself. A discussion with the, uh, with the developer side of it is to add language again to the improvement district agreement saying that the city will just go mow it and then, again, cost for the contractor and the administrative fee, uh, on top of that because it is an issue where, uh, based on conversations with Jace, it is almost like a service that the city is now offering.
Yeah, that's how they're treating it. It's really disrespectful. Just because we have a lot of construction going on in town does not mean that residents deserve to be living in a construction zone all the time. It's really frustrating. I would like the developers to pick up their slack.
So know that staff is working on it.
Perfect. Um, I think that was it.
All right, Stephanie?
Um, all I have is just, I'm hoping we can get the population study that we discussed published out. We have, we don't have copies of it, um, and then maybe publish it out.
Yeah, we are just waiting to have the presentation.
Okay.
So once that, since we had that, now we could have that posted, so. Yep.
That's all I have.
All right, Rachel?
Some changes for bean days, um, and I don't, I think they're finalized, Paul. I think some, the switch is finalized, right? So, kind of a major shakeup is that Big Rivers wanted some Alabama, and they're only available on Friday. So the Friday night activities of the, the street dance downtown on seventeen, they, that swapped with the car show fireworks headquarters area, um, music. And so then, uh, I guess one change is just that that band will probably, uh, will play longer. It'll be another night street dance instead of, I think historically that one's kind of wrapped up with the firework show. That one is going to then go until midnight as well, and then we're meeting this week, um, about a lot of other details.
What day and what time?
Thursday at four. So, what else? Um, do we have signage for this building? Not yet? Okay.
Uh, that was one of the, we wanted to make sure the, eh, everything else was working and then signage was one of the lower priority items, so.
I was just curious about it. Um, I think that's all I have.
Okay. All right, to clarify, you've got Big Rivers having a dance on Friday night and now HQ having the dance on Saturday night.
Yes.
Correct, okay. And the car show will still be following HQ, so that'll be Saturday night as well.
Car show will be Saturday afternoon, Saturday evening afternoon. What'd you say? Yeah, and then that will shut down, um, and then the dance will start. I think those are the.
So we'll do a car show four or five o'clock until dusk, um, essentially, and then most of the cars will leave, something like that. Um, then we're gonna transition into a concert.
Okay.
Much like last year, it's just extended.
And that'll be all during bean days?
Yep.
We're having two, basically two concerts, large-scale concerts, Friday and Saturday.
Oh my god, when are we gonna sleep?
Yeah, also trying to incorporate both, well, trying to incorporate Meadowlark and Freed for kind of different types of things. Everyone is really happy about the shuttle, um, kind of encouraging that again. I think that was, is that a Stephanie idea?
Oh, I think it was a Paul slash Stephanie idea a couple years ago, and it's really worked out well, very, very well.
Yep. Okay, that's all I have.
That's all you got? All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion. I got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good night, folks.